It's the September meeting on Simsbury Zoning Commission. And our first order of business is to confirm who's here and who isn't.
Richard Salz is, will not be attending this evening. He called in saying.
Is Josh here? Jackie, are you ready to sit for?
Sure.
Okay. And for our next order of business, take up the minutes of the meeting that we held on September fourth. Hope everybody had an opportunity to look this over. Now call for any corrections, additions, omissions. Any comments?
Yeah, I just think on line one thirty seven is an extract and we're not.
Well, I'll raise a point, but it has to do with the phrasing.
Which line said?
One seventy one. Um, I think it got lost, but there wasn't a point made uh, to the effect that the Connecticut general statute calls for the decision on this thing to be made by the Board of Selectmen, and it does not call for participation by the zoning commission. So when it comes time for a decision, it's not going to be made in this room. It's going to be made, well, in our meeting, it's going to be made in a Board of Selectmen meeting. So I don't know if a couple of words might, or a phrase might improve that. I just thought, you know, public participation and reading of the minutes, it appointed significant, I think, and it's missing.
Would you like us to add a parenthetical at the end that says staff provided an update, zoning commission has, has no role in the decision-making process?
Sounds good.
That's what we'll do. Add that to end of line one seventy two.
Okay, any other comments, corrections? Hearing that, I'll call for a motion to approve the minutes with those changes.
Some note.
And a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes with the changes that were discussed, and all in favor say aye please.
Aye.
And those opposed, aye. And when it's approved, we can, um, hold on. For our next order of business, we have a public hearing. And it has to do with the application twenty four dash twenty. Tony, do you want to read the?
Yeah.
Public meeting.
Application ZC number twenty four dash twenty. An application of Louis and George Esquire applicant for a text amendment to the Simsbury zoning regulations pursuant to section five industrial districts. And section seventeen definitions to permit agricultural and agricultural events and organics recycling facility as permitted main uses in industrial I dash one, I dash two districts.
George, do you want to do a little summary on this?
Brittany's gonna do a little summary, and I suspect that, um, you know, the applicant, Mr. George would want to follow that.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so before he was the public hearing for the proposed text amendment, um, the addition of two permitted uses, uh, be allowed in the industrial zones, I one and, and I two. Uh, the proposed uses are a composting wood recycling use as well as an agricultural use. Um, that these text changes would be made to section five point five in industrial uses and then a definition for organic recycling, uh, to section seventeen, our definition section in our zoning regulations. So here is the proposed definition.
So that is the text of the amendment that we'll be voting on, sure.
Yes, so, so, so that particular, particular use and definition doesn't exist in your, in your zoning regulations today. Organic recycling, obviously agriculture, we wouldn't have to have a new definition for that or agricultural activities. But the organics is, so we're showing, um, we're showing you that, so those, those additions would be to the, to the I, um, you know, I one and I two tables.
Mr. George.
Thank you. Good evening, Louis George, uh, I'm here on behalf of Chris Latt, um, who is the owner of Fry Farm and Flammig Farm Earth Products. Uh, this came about, um, as a result of Chris now being steward of the, uh, community farm on Walcott. Uh, for the next five years, they, at least was signed in, um, July. Uh, and as we looked at it, the farm has been there for, um, over a hundred years. Uh, but it's technically in, um, I one zone and, uh,
Yeah.
there's no farm use there, agricultural use or anything. So that brought us to the point of determining that it should be on the use table. And in addition, uh, as part of his agricultural use, uh, he'll be doing wood recycling. Uh, so that too is not on that use table. So, um, as a result, we determined that we had to have a agricultural, um, operations and the, uh, wood recycling, organic recycling on the use table. There was no mention of organic recycling in the regulations, uh, so we, uh, worked with staff to define that. Uh, nothing of what's being put on here is anything new that's uh, not been occurring on that farm for some time. Both the farming, obviously, and, uh, wood recycling has been occurring in that area, uh, already. So from that perspective, uh, it doesn't change anything, but to put everything in line and have the zoning regulations, um, meet what's occurring and, and adding an organic recycling, which we think is important uh, for the town to have, would be important. In addition, um, it's within those I one zones, we added in there under that definition, um, that it's contiguous, uh, to a farm and provides the organic materials for that farm. Uh, which his operation will, uh, and that kind of tightens it up in that, uh, this is not something that occur in anywhere within town. So it has to be where a farm, in that zone, where a farm is in providing, uh, materials for that farm. The whole idea of, of the use that, um, Mr. Latt has been having on this is for providing the community, uh, products for the poor, uh, educational, uh, uses and general farming uses, um, all of which is part of what, uh, when it was transferred from Mr. Eno to the town a hundred and some odd years ago, uh, was what he wanted. Uh, and this continues that and provides an opportunity to show sustainable use, taking, uh, all the materials from a microburst, bringing them there and at some point in the future, using those uh, to better, uh, facilitate farming. Um, and that's really what the text amendment's all about. Any questions?
Questions, um, I'm just curious. Is there any specific reason why farming would have been at, on any time excluded from an, an industrial zone, like? I mean, aside from the fact that they don't seem to, you know, they're two different purposes, but is there any reason that I'm not thinking of why we not want farming to be included in the law?
My, uh, do you want me to go?
Uh, I was really asking George that, but, but feel free, or Brittany, but feel free.
Look, George, his first name, my last.
If anybody wants to ask me, it would be fine.
Um, uh, I think it's just something I was overlooked, cause farming, um, uh, there has been there forever and you know, most of these farms have been there long before some of these zones were set. So I, I, I don't think it's anything more than that, but you may have a better understanding.
So no, I, I mean, I, I, I don't have any particular reason for that. I mean, again, you've got your, 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 your plan of conservation and development is, is, says it's supportive of farming operations and those kinds of things, and so I don't know why we would prohibit something like that, and therefore, you know, when they, when, when the applicant came to us after, after, you know, negotiating with the Board of Selectmen on the lease and doing that, that happened way back in May. Staff didn't have a role in that part, but, but, you know, that use isn't listed. We really, we, we ought to support agriculture in every zoning district, frankly, so that's our, our, our.
Sure. Okay, I just wasn't sure if there was something I was overlooking, so. Were they grand, as if it just been grandfathered, like what's the legal in which this was allowed previously?
Yeah. So no, so we could keep, yeah, it's, it's pre-existing non-conform, we could, we could, we don't have to even add, add agriculture to the district. You don't have to, it's, it's an existing agriculture operation for, for decades, decades, decades. So we thought we'd, to clean it up, it makes sense.
But we didn't. If we didn't change all the I one and I twos, could we just change, or do we need to change just this, the property where the farm is?
Uh.
You don't.
To allow the use. Oh, not, not.
Uh huh. I think the, the use is gonna occur, everything that, uh, Chris is intending to do is being done now, it's going to, it's going to happen.
With compost.
Approve, uh, assuming a, a site approval, but, uh, the, the, yeah, composting is an agricultural, uh, use, the, uh, wood recycling, uh, forestry, all of those things are all agricultural, uh, in general nature, so in our eyes, it's, it's, it's war, uh, uses that are already occurring there.
Sure.
Um, and will continue to occur under this lease, but we thought it would be smart to put it in the regulations and develop an organic recycling.
Not concerned with this site per se, but to change all the I ones and I twos, I think we really need to look at
so, so.
what all those could be.
So in order to, you know, in order to, to introduce the use
Yeah.
in the location, you still, it, it's a text amendment to the regulation, so it's got to apply equally to any property that is owned I one or I two. There's no other way to do that. Um, perhaps the way to be more specific would be in how you review it, by site plan, by special exception, by right, that kind of thing. So still have to apply it across the board.
But this site that we're talking about already, it's already an existing use? So the text amendment is totally separate?
It's, it's.
Well, it's, it's not separated, it just puts it in compliance, it puts the regulations into compliance with what's happening in town. Uh, and, uh, we tried to limit it, if you look at it as to, uh, from the recycling standpoint, where it, it has to be contiguous to a farm in that zone and provide, uh, the materials to that farm.
Right.
And there aren't, that's not gonna occur, uh, now.
Well, this is great because this is being said for this property, it would be in conjunction with Flammig Farm. But what if other?
No, no, it's not Flammig Farm.
It's not Flammig Farm?
No, it's the town farm.
Yep.
Down there, he's moving his operation from Flammig Farm.
That's what it is, okay, got it.
Down.
So what would what would stop another farm from outside of Simsbury to bringing in their compost or waste or whatever all these things are?
Yeah.
Uh, bring them where?
To this new, to this location, to the town farm.
They're trying to collect, uh, wood, that's their, their business is to collect wood, they don't go far, they don't accept from far distance, they don't, uh, deliver to very far distances, that's one of the things, but they will take in wood and leaves in that type and use that to develop a product. They will be doing it.
The, 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 the farm's lease is with the town.
Yep.
It's a, uh, and it's, that's, that's solely the, the proprietor, so I, I, I don't, I don't think it's, I mean, yes, could someone establish a farm in an I district and establish these uses at, at another location? Yes, they could, if you, if you were to approve this amendment.
Yes.
Uh, and then approve the site plan, yes, they could.
That's what I'm asking, so, cause we're not just talking about the town farm. We're talking about all the I, I one and I two, so we need to.
No.
Correct, there would need to be a farm.
Yeah.
Uh, they'd have to establish being a farm, and then they'd have to establish a, uh, wood recycling, uh, one or two.
Right.
Uh, contiguous to it. So it could be in some other area.
So let me just ask this though. Did you represent the tenant on that land in the negotiation of the lease with the town?
Yes.
Development of the lease. And so what's going on there now, consistent with the past, in your mind, is consistent with the regulation that you drafted, the amendments?
Yeah.
And so I might just want to make sure that we're all clear that the lease that you're operating on is consistent with these changes, that there's nothing going on here. It wouldn't, if, if we didn't, if we elected not to act on this, you're still gonna be on that property doing what is being done now because it has been done for many years in the past. And consequently, it's a pre-existing.
Uh, on the lease, the third paragraph talks about the uses. And it says to engage in farming, community, educational and charitable activities with cer- that certain wood waste, compost and recycling. Uh, to engage in agricultural activities, including the cultivation of fruit, vegetable flowers, to engage public retail sale, uh, products directly related to the permitted uses. Um, such other activities may be in furtherance for foregoing use of the plant. So from that perspective, i- it's our belief that, uh, what's, what we're proposing to do is exactly what's going on there right now. Here's a farm, there's mulching and composting, uh, materials, uh, that the town brings in. This is gonna be better serviced by Chris, that this town doesn't have to, uh, deal with it. So those are all occurring now already. This is more to, I guess, be a little anal and dot our i's, cross our t's and make it, put it in the regulations.
Let me just ask the.
Well, in defense of staff, I would.
No, no, me, I'm saying, no, I'm saying it's me.
I, I would suggest that, 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 that we did not think that that organics recycling in particular was defined in the ordinance and therefore wasn't something that was occurring there, and therefore needed to be defined and therefore approved by a site plan.
Right.
Is there anything governing the, like you're saying that the, the, um, tenant isn't going to, it doesn't deliver far and doesn't receive from far away, but is there anything governing that? Because I know in like other states like Vermont, you can't bring firewood over like the Vermont border. No, I don't know how anyone catches you doing that, but like technically you're not supposed to do that, so I don't know, like, is there any, there's no governing thing that prevents them from taking products, waste products from a farther area, should there be a storm somewhere else, and bringing like infected stuff to then recycle here and right next to the brook? No? I'm just wondering.
Uh, there, there's nothing regulating that other than I think it's financial law.
We're regulated by it, but it's not something you would worry about. That's, we, we can't bring firewood over state line in the Massachusetts, that's just a regulation.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm asking, I was asking that there are.
State, is this, is overriding state guidance, not law?
Yeah, that's, yeah, there's guidance.
Yeah, that, no, not legal, but I wanted to understand that there's some purview of that, so it's not just the goodness of the tenant's heart that that's protected somewhere. So it sounds like it is, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Just for the record, that's Chris Latt, who is the owner of, uh, Flammig Farmer Products.
And your address is? What, what is your address? We need it for the record.
Oh, my home address or business address?
I'm thinking of trans. Um, either one.
Seventy three Wolkett is, uh, Street, Simsbury, Connecticut, would be this one. It's also sixty eight Wolkett.
He wanted it for the record because he's speaking, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay. We have two addresses there. We have sixty eight Wolkett Road, we have seventy three Wolkett Road, um, Simsbury.
Right. Thank you.
So, uh.
I was just gonna ask if there's more questions of the commissioners.
I have a question. You said that, uh, there's a current operation at Flammig Farm that does the wood recycling, correct?
At Flammig Farm, yes. That's where he operates now.
Yeah. And the plan is to shut that down and move it to, uh, town, the farm?
Yes.
Okay, um, is, is it gonna be visible from the roadway? The, I mean, I, I've been to the farm, I've been to Flammig Farm, I've seen.
So Miss, let, let me just, just break in real quick, Mr. Broads, I, I mean, so you have further down your agenda, a site plan application.
Okay.
I know that you, you certainly can ask any questions you want, but you have in front of you a, a, a text
Mm-hmm.
amendment, so it would focus on, I wouldn't focus on, I would, I would counsel you not to focus on site specific.
Okay.
You're going to have an oppor- an opportunity to talk about the site specifics. You, I, I think your job after hearing from the public is going to be figure out whether you should add these uses to the I district or not.
All right. Thanks for clarification, George.
Now, are there other questions to the commissioners?
Um, more of a concern, just for where are the other I districts, the I two, before we go ahead and approve something like this.
Well, we're not going ahead to approve it, we're gonna hear from the public first, that's part of the public, yeah, so.
Just putting it out there, thank you.
Okay. So, did you have more you wanted to add?
Uh, no.
Okay, then we're ready to hear from the public, if there's anybody who wants to speak on this application. Diane, if you could come up with a question. My apologies, we need your name and address.
I'm Diane. Excuse me, Diane Nash. Hi, I'm sorry. Uh, I guess I'm asking you. Who is, what's the most important properties? Our selectmen? Our board of finance? And I'm telling you, it's you. You, our zoning commissioners are the ones who guard and enforce everything we as residents have said we want it Simsbury to be, we want it to continue to be, we want it to safeguard. We don't elect you because you represent a political party. We elect you because you do your job carefully. You pay attention to what's next to a property, how it affects, how it was zoned when the people bought the property, what they understood the zoning regulation was. And each time somebody comes to you for a variance, or even without a variance, under by right use. You check that. But when they come to you for a variance, you check every, how does it affect? If there are smells coming from the property and there's a bakery in the same zone next door, you check, is that an appropriate use when they're wanting a variance? You also get elected because of your fortitude. I, I've watched you over the years sit through tedious, careful. And this is why I so oppose a by right amendment to add a possible by use variance when you wanna, somebody comes to you and they meet the regulation. This is the end. But don't do it across the board. The district. When you ask, where are all these properties? When you look at where all the A one and A one two properties are, you don't want a processing plant there. And you don't want them trucking the recycle over to the farm because it sounds so wonderful. Today I tried out a couple of friends and just said this text amendment, and they said, oh, that sounds great. Well, when you're used as a farm, there's a huge difference of why A ones were at all farmed. The tax to the town changes enormously if you're taxed as a farm. So there are huge benefits that can come, even I checked the, not technically farm, but used as a farm. There's, there's something in the ordinances that says, I don't know if you have a farm-related activity and you give away prices of more than six hundred dollars or something. You can claim a tax exemption on your land. So before we change any zoning by right, let's make sure we know all of the effects that it's going to have down the road. And you do your job so well and you're asked to do more than anybody. And I say this with proper respect to our planning commissioners and our souring employees who do their job, but nobody does the job as diligently as you do. And I ask you not to advocate what we voted for you to do. And please, by variance, if it's appropriate, you'll do your job. Across the board by right, you're open ain't a can of worms, you don't, you can't possibly know because this whole idea of recycled composting is, is all new as Attorney George mentioned, it's it's not in the ordinance because it wasn't done. And we don't know what impact it's gonna have on a stream out there on your soil, you don't know what kind of absorption it's gonna have. And the community farm, I think only annually they have to check. They do it every six months. They check to make sure nothing is contaminating the stream out there. So are you gonna be able to do that in an I one zone? No. Thank you. And thank you all. I'll give out an ask for that the end.
John? Could you give us your name and address too, please?
Well, she'll give it to you.
Joe Coe, twenty six Woodcombe Drive. Before anyone discusses the use of the land of the community farm, one must understand that the land was donated to the town by Amos Eno to serve the poor. The town farm is to be used for the occupation, maintenance and support of the town's poor and for no other purpose whatsoever. That's in the deed. Amos Eno also specified that the land could be used by the town to help the poor, quote, "For only so long as the town shall care for and support its poor on said farm without contracting them out to any person or persons for their care and maintenance." "The town is not to sell or dispose of any part of said farm to any person or persons," end quote. This proposal is in violation of the Eno Trust and should be reviewed by the Charities Division of the Attorney General's Office before there is any voting on this text amendment. The town has approved the lease agreement with Flammig Farm Products disposal that is a violation of the land designation and should be ordered to cease and desist with the operation and removal of all their equipment from the land. Chip wood could bring many insects, mold and other contaminants to the land. Chip wood piles can be a fire hazard. Food waste could bring wildlife to the site, or chips can create a habitat for slugs. DEP requires composting businesses to have permits to protect the environment. As of this date, there are no permits with Flammig Farm registered with the DEP for this particular project. Changing the designation of zones is creating a change in the character of Simsbury and not should be the hands of a biased political attorney defending a client. There are always unintended consequences when changes are blanketed throughout the town and should not be used to further a hidden agenda. The zoning commission has the authority to permit special exceptions on the benefits presented on a case-by-case basis. The members of the zoning com- The members of the zoning commission were voted by the people to protect the town. The town land that creates a positive quality of life, not a political attorney that is self-serving. I urge the zoning commission to deny the motion that the zoning commissioner approved ZC number twenty-four dash twenty, an application of Louis N. George Esquire applicant for a text amendment to the Simsberry zoning regulations pursuant to section five, industrial districts and section seventeen definitions to permit agriculture and agriculture and agricultural events and organics recycling facility as a main use in a, in a I, I one, I two districts. And all of my comments, we posted on Simsberry Pat and Twitter at Joan Coe. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Boyko from fifteen Oakhurst Road. And I've spent so many literally days researching this that I spent more time researching than I did crafting some beautiful thing to say, so I'm gonna try and bullet point this. But the first thing I wanna say is that I have serious concerns about what's being proposed, why it's being proposed, and the resulting outcome to the town. First of all, the idea of changing the zoning in every I1 and I2 zone property to accommodate this one parcel is absurd. It makes absolutely no sense. It's like burning the house down to kill a spider. I might actually be inclined to burn my house down to kill a spider, but that's a whole nother story. I am a hundred percent in favor of recycling, all kinds of recycling. I think it's something we should all be doing. I'm probably the only one in town that really puts only recyclable stuff in my blue bin. But, the situation here feels incredibly disingenuous to me. Because I feel like if you want a text amendment to change the whole town zoning, why? Why, why are we doing this and why is I2 even included? Because none of the parcels that we're talking about are even I2. So, first of all, there are other I1 properties in town that could be impacted by this blanket change, including hundreds of acres behind residential properties, up behind Field Drive, and the apartments behind Antonio's Restaurant. All of that land back there, to my knowledge, is I1 based on what I found on the Simsberry GIS map online. Other properties that are I1 include the fifty Hot Meadow Street, which is immediately adjacent to the Curaleaf property, and also adjacent to the new preschool where two hundred and twenty children are supposed to be able to go to school or daycare. There are the Mill Property in Terriffill, I believe, is I1. There's a whole lot of acreage in Powder Forest, which is I1. Fifty Hot Meadow is, one, on the market for sale. And two, right now, right now, Curaleaf is shredding waste product in their parking lot with a wood chipper. Like, but whatever the byproduct is when you don't need all of the plant or whatever. I, I don't even know if that's legal or not legal. But i- it's really concerning to me that we're brought an entire text amendment for this one property. I, I, like I said, I forget, I can't figure out how I2 fits in it, except there's one I2 property immediately adjacent to the Simsberry Town Farm that coincidentally has recently become occupied by a, a company that sells wood chips and compost and pavers and other contractor supplies. So, I can't help but wonder if this isn't gonna become a much bigger operation once it's all approved. You know, I, I'm, I'm a little disappointed because Attorney George said that they entered into this lease with the understanding that they could do everything that they needed to do on this property. Yet in their request for proposal, it says right in it, one of the things they need to do for their wood chipping operation is rece- receive zoning approval for the compost operations. Which isn't, is it legal or do we need zoning approval? And if we don't need zoning approval, then why are we here? And if we do need zoning approval, then maybe we didn't enter into the lease agreement with all of the known information. I don't think that composting, commercial organic material is grandfathered in here. Maybe to compost what's on the farm, but not necessarily, you know, like whatever farm byproduct there is, but not to bring in commercial waste from other places. I wanna point out that commercial organic material for recycling is not what you and I think of as organic. It's not like the organic food in the grocery store that doesn't have pesticides and doesn't have chemicals and is non-GMO. That's not, not what organic recycling is. Organic material really means agricultural and horticultural residuals, food scraps, regardless of organic designation, and possibly including non-medicinal recreational cannabis plant waste. I don't know if that's what's going on here, but the problem is when the application came in, it was just sort of like, oh shucks, we just need it for this property. Why? There are some caveats, but make no mistake, this is not a blanket zone text change that we want. One of these, I gave you guys these printouts. One of them was in your zoning packet, this very colorful one. The other two here that are in front of you are from the selectmen's packet as part of the application with the selectmen to get a lease on the farm. And if you look very carefully, those documents show you that when this was presented to the selectman, this very exact same ten acres that's now being already cleared and the greenhouse that says is existing has already been removed. And there are crane mats out there which you use when you bring in big, big equipment for construction. This, the selectman presentation said in the red box here that this was gonna be organic vegetable gardening. And now over here, it's an entire commercial recycling operation. On this document, it shows how they were gonna plan all the vegetables and what crops were gonna go in hundred-foot rows in their new software for that purpose. But that's completely a hundred and eighty degrees difference from what you're looking at now. So, there's a lot wrapped up in here, there's the whole townwide text amendment. If you approve the text amendment, that allows agricultural, if you look at the little chart, it says now agricultural's okay on all those properties. And, um, recycling, organic matter recycling changed by special, what is that called? Site plan amendment, which does not require another public hearing. So anybody with one of these properties that wants to make that change can just put in a site plan amendment, maybe come before zoning, maybe not, maybe have a public hearing, maybe not. It opens a door to a whole lot of uses without a whole lot of oversight. Most of that land is also floodplain. Now, I don't believe, well, it said something in the entire zoning packet about the back one acre of this being included in the floodplain. But if a hundred-year flood happens, they're just gonna move the equipment in the piles and be good. I, I don't know if that needs a wetlands permit, I didn't have time to research that this week. But, most of that land is not used. Usable because it's wetlands, maybe for farm, but it's not usable for other things. And so now all this commercial operation got shoved into this ten acres right along the airport. The other thing I wanna point out, um, that thank goodness for these ladies with decades of information on the history of this town. But there have been hoop houses in those fields that are at the end of the runway for the airport that have been actually knocked over by low-flying planes that have come in too low, cause that's actually a very short runway for airplanes. My father used to have a pilot's license and he wouldn't fly in there because it was too tight for his plane. So, if you have a plane that comes in low, you're looking at a ten to fifteen-foot hoop house thing in there.
Lori, could you get back to the main topic, we, we need to move this along.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right, well, I'm at the end, so anyway. There are also state regulations that are, that are coming into play here. But for a few businesses that, along with the odors and the decomposing rot and the food waste and the bears and the animals it will attract, this is not a door we want opened. Furthermore, this was, uh, I don't mind, I'm on my next page. This is not at all what was presented to the selectmen. It's really a hundred and eighty-degree difference. I beg you to keep this public hearing either open to receive more information or to vote this down entirely to preserve our town and our turn, town-owned property from destruction we didn't see coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wanna speak? Also start with your name and address, please.
Yep. My name's Fabio Colmer, five Clifton Drive. I'm here to talk about the trucking topics as I own a trucking company. I was here last week and never had the opportunity to speak about the unlawful freight consolidation terminal that was in a, approved in a residential neighborhood. Trucks belong in industrial zone and farms belong in farmland. My parking lot at my shop is covered in grease oil and garbage because I can't control every third-party vendor that decides to deliver there. On the next note, going back to the unlawful freight terminal, the permit was approved. What approved means is that it's allowed. I'm with everyone here that we don't wanna hurt someone's business. There could have been wording such as, you have two years until a cease and desist is enforceable versus flat-out saying this is allowed for the next two years. Circling this back to the text amendment, if anything, if anyone can do anything unlawful and then zoning issues a permit, why would a text amendment be necessary?
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Ellen Gilbert, I'm one twenty-six Hotmanos Street, uh, in the Weetalk part of Simsberry. And, um, I have listened to Lori and to Diane and, and I've, I've heard what Joan has to say tonight. And, um, I support what they say and, and that, uh, why does it have to be, you know, all the zones to, uh, changed because of this, um, issue? And also, it doesn't, it, it, it doesn't seem right. Um, I drove by there, they, that greenhouse is gone, they have already started bringing in those big, um, they, they look like railroad ties, only they're several, um, connected together. And, uh, so, I, I encourage you to, to listen to what they've said.
Any other papers? Uh, just one more time.
Can, can I respond?
Uh, yes, just a minute, I just wanted to, well, why don't you go first?
Can I, can I just make one point before you go?
Lori, we've, I think you've had enough time, really, to say that was important to yourself.
Yes.
So, so.
Did you have a question or did you, did you wanna ask?
No, I didn't have a question, I wanted to make sure you hit the last opportunity because that's the theory.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, while, while Mr. George is going up there, I will, um, just for the record, I, I did provide you with a letter or an email from Susan Messina that came in late this afternoon that is in front of you at your desk. And then two, the, the planning commission did review this as a text amendment and did provide a positive referral for the text change.
No problem, thank you. So, I appreciate people's concerns about how a text amendment can affect various aspects of town. Just a little, um, uh, confusing in the sense that the text amendment is to allow farming, which every other application in development and use in town gets, uh, objected to by many of the same people because they're taking away the pastoral aspect of the town. And this is a text amendment that helps keep that. I just, I saw that and I figured it's a little contrary. This is something that has, um, the application, I think it's been fourteen months, uh, in working with the town to, uh, get this leased, not something that happened, uh, tonight. It is, uh, discussed with everybody. Uh, and, um, the, the uses occurring there now are exactly what we're looking to, to put into this amendment. So, it, it's not anything new, it's not anything various, uh, as they may recommend. Uh, it's, it's occurring. Uh, the only additional part that's in there is the, um, uh, content posting of, um, food waste recycling, which is in the plan of use that was, um, set forth to the board of selectmen, doesn't even occur for three years, which would take more of a, um, uh, concerted effort between the landlord, the town, and the tenant as to where it would be. Uh, the present application that's out there that's before you tonight does not include that, it's purely wood recycling. Um, but in terms of the definition, it includes that as that is a place where I think everybody in this room would like to see us go to. Sustainability, um, uh, recycling and composting. Uh, that's something that the staff, it was determined that, let's have one now, let's get it in there. And that's something that has to go through a site plan, so it's not gonna happen, uh, without you looking at it, um, at some point in time. Uh, there was a mention by, um, uh, Ms. Boyko regarding the zoning approval. Uh, that is occurring tonight, uh, and she mentioned that that was in the original plan and there would be a zoning approval, that is the site plan, and that is something that is, is before you under our application later on in the agenda. So, it's not something that you're not looking at, uh, in that term. There are no permits, um, at this point in time that are necessary for his operation, we've looked into that. Um, the, many of those comments had to do more with the actual use in the site plan at that location, which I'll say to, uh, site plan. In terms of the text amendment, I think, um, those are the main points that we have. And I don't know if there's anything, Chris, that you had, uh?
We wanna talk about where the compost operation is versus the original.
Yes, yeah, actually, thank you, I did have that written down. So, uh, there was a mention that, uh, to the board of selectmen, uh, where the present composting is gonna be, was gonna be farming. In that original proposal, the composting is gonna be where it is now, which is behind, uh, the landfill area. In talking with the town and Tom Roy, given that the only access was through the Paines area, uh, he thought it'd be better to move it to a different location. And with everybody involved and talking, uh, that's how he came up with that location. In addition,
He, he being Tom Roy?
Tom, Tom. Uh, and in addition, all I would say is, um, today, uh, what's going on down there, so you, you take the ten acres for the composting, yet there's over twenty acres that have been completely neglected, um, to your point in terms of what Mr. Eno would have wanted, uh, and not that, there's twenty-some odd acres down by the water that, uh, Mr. Latt's on his own dime has already, uh, restored, began the restoration period, cut down trees, um, that, you know, these old, old-grown shrubs and things to get the land back to, uh, farming. Uh, Brittany's actually, actually did see that area down there. Um, maybe Tom and Brittany have seen that. So there's a, an effort, and then there's a, another half acre right by the farm that has been neglected, um, already. So, the town is gaining farming use in a very large way compared to where it is right now and where it's been over the last number of years. And, um, over the last number of years, the town has, um, had other people go in to use it. But farming's tough, uh, it's hard to sustain it for the poor. Uh it's hard to sustain it for the poor when you make no money on it. Uh and he has an agricultural use that's at a farm now. Uh he's an agricultural major from town. Uh it fits together so well to put all of this in in use um and it's all agricultural, all being done in that area. Um and nothing was um hidden or changed at the last minute, it's all all been a process of discussion as to what would be best for the farm, what would be best to provide the poor. And I will say that uh Mr. Lats has already made two donations uh to the uh food shelter uh of the the items that had come off the farm and he couldn't even start it at the regular farming season. They started midway when you know they got the lease uh and have already provided um items to the food shelter. So I think he he's well on his way and getting back to the text amendment. To to make it all appropriate, this is the the way to go, develop an organic recycling definition and provide it in those zones and I don't think it it harms the town, um I think if anything it may. Sorry, that's all I can say.
Just a moment.
Let me uh send two quick questions.
Sure.
Sorry, um one, is the use on on the town farm going to differ from the use that is currently over at Fleming? In other words, you're moving your operations from over by Fleming to Winkett Road, is the operation going to change substantially?
At the beginning, absolutely not, uh in three years if they wanna do the food waste and things like that, cuz that's not done there now.
No.
Okay.
That's separate.
Okay, and just question number two, who is actually farming at town farm right now?
Yeah, Chris Lattes.
So you you are doing the farming at town?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a new challenge.
It started late in the season, um before that, it was uh last year, uh the first, I think Gifts of Love uh
Okay.
was was doing it, but yes.
And that's a different contract from on that sort of
Yeah, but there there were numerous other leases along the way to try to get the farm operational. With all due respect, none of which have worked, um and uh this uh synergy, I think, is really good, especially when you see twenty acres of uh pris pristine land, now that you can see it in the shrubbery and all that's gone, that has not been used in years.
Anything else? Could you just remind us when the Amos Eno uh will was uh effective?
Eighteen eighty-three.
So it clearly predates nineteen thirty-five zoning.
Oh, yes, 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 thank you, without a doubt.
I think we're all set, um. Does any if there are no many, well.
I don't have questions, I have comments.
She has.
I I have questions, but not for him, more for
Yeah, I'm.
I'm asking the staff report, so.
We should propose the public hearing.
Right, it's a question of closing the public hearing.
I I do not feel comfortable, I I would like to extend the public hearing. I I don't feel comfortable with the amount of information that we have, I'd like to hear from the public more.
We offered the opportunity.
That's why I'm I'm saying that we should offer another opportunity.
Oh, okay.
I don't think this was really as we know, sometimes it takes a couple of hearings for the word to be out there.
Be so long after.
Right.
One way or the other.
Right, one way or the other, right, but I really, I'm I'm not comfortable with the limited amount of public participation we have had thus far.
Thank you for your views.
Sure, anytime.
Really. Before we wrap up, I mean, we would wanna consider that. And if there are three others who feel the same way, then probably we would not close the hearing with a decision today. But looking back to that. So does anybody have um something further to say before we take up the question of closing the public hearing? Or we'll defer that.
Are we still allowed to discuss and ask you guys questions? We just can't hear from the audience, is that true?
Yes.
Well, you haven't closed the public hearing yet.
The public hearing has been.
So then, yeah, yeah.
I was just wondering, I want my time to ask my questions of George, okay?
I asked you, it's okay.
But yeah, you, yes, you can always do that.
So I just, uh so I was looking at, you know, in the staff report and it says that the facility for the this is just a general rule so that we understand the parameters of this type of use, which seems to be of most concern to people. Um and it says that the facility has to be contiguous to ongoing to an ongoing farm or ag agricultural operations and it has to be supplying the organic recycled material to that farm. That is, where that, where is that coming from? That's just in the definition, is that that's part of the definition that we're suggesting that we offer?
For the recycling compost, that was part of that definition that the applicant.
But it doesn't have to provide only to that.
You can't have an organics recycling facility per our definition without an associated farm working together
But they can do, but but it says you have to provide it, but you don't have to only provide to that farm. You can sell it and provide to your farm as long as some of the material is going to that farm, is that what I'm understanding here, because it seems like he's got a business.
So the quality, I think the idea is to have a a farm be working towards
Which is sells.
for the compost use to use it. So the materials that are coming from the farm are are with the compost use, are being used with.
That's not what's happening. So we're suggesting a definition that the parcel that is bringing this up isn't meeting, right?
It I I think it is, I think it is meeting it. So there'll be a working farm on the parcel.
There it is.
Yes, but I think.
And it is providing to restore those fields, a lot of material that he would otherwise sell is being used to help the town farm at his town property, not his, and he's doing that on his dime, so.
But the purpose of the composting is as a business, not it's not part of a sustainable story of a farm trying to compost, which I feel like that text is implying. Like it implies that the products that are being composted, it implies like I'm a farmer and I want to have um composting because I wanna take that composting and use it for my field and I'm creating this like sustainable cycle. But that's not the model, so that's that's the definition as I'm reading it, maybe I'm misunderstanding. But that's not supporting the model of what I feel like this group is trying to do, so it seems counterproductive in that sense.
Can I respond to that?
Because.
It's the chairman.
So um the the model is doing that, um so his material that he could otherwise sell is being used to enhance the farm, which for the last twenty or thirty years has not been done, and I won't say maybe that long.
Eighteen.
Eighteen years has not been done. So i- it is not only used for that.
Right, I guess that's where I'm.
He will sell
Yes.
and he will make money, let's
Yeah.
put it right out there because there's no other way that farm's gonna exist and you're not gonna do Eno's uh Mr. Eno's uh concerns and and do him right because you've tried that for
You need money to do that.
ever and you need some money to do that and there's no better way than having the material and um what also Mr. Eno asked uh he talked about was education and community involvement. And the education is providing this cycle from a microburst and no one wants all the brush, it goes somewhere and he's the guy and taking that and someday turning it in uh as years go by, whether it be uh for the fields there, the fields somewhere else to enhance them, or mulch to enhance half the proposals and the landscape that you people were talking about at the design review for Big Sky. Uh those are all the products that he provides. Um so tha- that is a story and is part of the educational uh process. Um and on that basis, I would also say from that educational component that is part of the whole cycle, um he's already had ten interns, four interns?
Oh, four, yeah.
Four this year and I and he's only had it since July from
Ukun and Amerifor.
that have been out there um on that and that's part of it, the taking the compost and moving it along, but it's not completely just for the farm.
That's what I was trying to.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to, before you step away, just to be clear, the proposal is that the farm will accept third-party materials, right? It's just not gonna be composting materials generated on-site, correct?
I- it's gonna accept uh brush and trees and leaves from the community.
Correct, so.
And then the product will be processed there and then used.
Yes, I think uh I mean I think what Kate was getting at is that there's a difference between composting materials generated as part of the farming operation and accepting third-party materials from outside the farm and composting that, there is a difference.
You have to go outside the farm to get the wood. To begin, this is a wood recycling, um the the food is a whole different issue, that's not even occurring now. It's not even in the plan for three years, it's just wood, so the farm doesn't have the wood now.
Right.
So it has to get it from somewhere else and then bring it there. Processing, it takes a couple of years to develop into the materials um that are on that uh list that you have to do that.
Right, right, now I I said, I just wanna make sure that we're all clear that you will be accepting materials that are not generated on-site.
No question, that it has to go somewhere.
Right.
Kate, we could we could change that definition, we could write more words in to be to clarify as long as I mean, if if your point is simply to be clear on what the operation is.
Yeah, I just find it a little bit confusing. Yeah, and I mean, I mean, I just found it a little bit confusing
Yeah.
because it I feel like it implies like a certain amount of like cycle within one piece of land and that's not what's happening.
I I think that the intent of the language, and again, Mr. George drafted the language.
But I understand what it is. Yeah.
It that was such that it what you couldn't just have a standalone operation, that it had
Right.
Right, that's what we're trying to.
Had to be connected in some, even if it didn't, um you know, even it was just a portion or some.
Yes. Some, I feel like that would help me with that definition and I'm not commenting on the
You know, so you can use that language, yeah. Yeah, I understand.
on our plan right now, I'm just wanted to understand that definition because that would be one of the things that we would be voting.
But just uh back to another point, when you refer to the materials coming from the community, that's not just the community of Simsbury I'm inferring, it's the wider world. It's anywhere on the globe, it's not just, well, maybe that's an.
There's a practical side to.
Exactly, the economics of the business, but you know, to the extent the economics of the business support it.
Take trees, yeah. Right.
That's where.
That's correct, it will be coming and if you had a microburst in Bloomfield,
Right.
it's probably, he's gonna go look for that because that's gonna help develop more material and move on, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Can I tag one thing on there too?
Sure.
Just one thing, um uh Kate, that you said, it's a business, okay. All farms are business.
Yeah, yeah, I don't have a problem with you making money on the item items. I had a problem with your business model not matching what I saw in the definition. And the point of the definition is.
Is it? Is it agricultural business? E- everything that we do now, the wood waste, that is all agricultural. So we're we're saying that's the composting section, still agricultural use.
I have a question for George, if I may. Um I I don't object to this use case, I think our farm is a messy business, I'm I I actually would hope in three years maybe you'd let me start bringing my household um composting to you and give me my little bucket and do all that fun stuff and I would love that. But I'm not in love with doing a text amendment and and without exploring the other I zones. So is there another way for us to accomplish this without without at least having the opportunity to explore the further impact across the town if we actually do a text amendment?
So yes.
Okay.
I I I think there is. Um as the application was proposed, it was repo- proposed um to undergo an approval process for site plan review. Right, and so site plan review does not require a public hearing. It is not site-specific, you know, typically if you meet site plan requirements, you meet site plan requirements. So um you could consider the alternative review process of the special exception process, which is a public hearing process, which is a process where you have review criteria to apply to a specific piece of ground, whether it's whether the proposal is compatible in that location, that it makes land use sense. So it is, uh uh the special exception process becomes a case-by-case review process. And obviously you have reviewed special exceptions for uh liquor stores and drive-throughs and so obviously the body is familiar with the special exception process, so so that um that that change would al- would allow the case-by-case review. So you could i- i- um yes, it's still, somebody could still apply to 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 kind of respond to Mrs. Ba- Mrs. Babbels. Um it could apply to a a an I-one or I-two zone, but you could find that it's not appropriate in that location. It's where, for whatever reason, um yeah. In order to approve the special exception, you would you would find that the use is is appropriate and reasonable in the location pro- uh proposed, as as conditioned or as mitigated with, you know, whatever things you need to do to make it more compatible.
I know it's more compatible, yeah.
Again, it it it, again, it's a it's another application, it's another review process, it's
Same, agree.
but but that is how to solve that problem, I think.
So what's.
And that gets us to a public hearing. That gets us to another public hearing.
That gets you to a public hearing on the site specifics of the application, yes.
Right. Right.
So for sixty-eight, we'll cut. Right?
So let's let's take this example, this example, if if this is where we were headed and you passed an amendment and the change would be you would you would allow the use by special exception and then the applicant would pr- would would submit a special exception application. They very submitted the site plan, so we would essentially take that together, you would review a special exception and site plan application and have a public hearing on the merits of the site plan and the special exception, yes.
So.
I would support that.
To get there from here though, we need to modify the text amendment that we're looking at.
I think.
This doesn't get us.
Yeah, you you so your motion would, I mean, if if again, you 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 two options, and you 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 sound like you wanted to keep the public hearing open.
Not exactly. I'm sorry.
So that's one motion on its own and then that you you wouldn't be approving anything.
Yeah, totally.
So if we're doing this, right.
Right, but if so to keep the if we're doing a special exception, then we don't need a motion to keep the public hearing open, correct?
You do you do not, no, I mean, I think you you could close the public hearing and then in your motion you would uh amend, you'd so you'd make a motion to approve the text amendment with the following change or changes as you see fit.
Okay.
Oh, we don't need to do that. We could say that we wanna do a special exception.
Well, we still have to decide.
You you have to, yeah, so I mean essentially your change would be you would make be- because the draft shows S P, your change would to be make that S E.
So I think.
Hmm.
S P, S E.
I mean, I don't, like, I feel like in the particular example, that in an industrial area where it is kind of makes sense to me, but you could see where it might not apply in some of these other, like when you're looking at the
Right.
I've pulled it up on my phone, when you're looking at the other areas,
Mm.
that exact thing or some other thing, it depends on what someone's trying to do and you know, like agritourism might not make sense in a small residential neighborhood and you know, so I think that we need to, or I mean, I guess where they where they align, because there are some industrial zones that are wrapping around through industrial uh through residential neighborhoods, et cetera, I think we do need to be able to look at that on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
Um.
And to to that end, like I was as trying to say before, um I do think we need more public input on that because I don't think that that is I I'm very uncomfortable with making a change across the board and I think um if we're doing, if we're gonna do a special exception and we're going site by site, that's impactful to different pieces of the community, so I would like to hear what people that, you know, around those special exception areas think.
So I think what we're saying is we're okay with the motion as long as we change the, just a special exception.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Good.
That's that's not quite what she understood.
Yeah, are you hoping?
Oh, is that not, oh, sorry, this was what I said, you got it, sorry, I got you wrong, sorry, gotcha.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She wants a public hearing, she doesn't want it, no.
She wants more time.
I want more time, thank you.
Oh, yes, not.
Yes, I, I all together, I'm.
Okay, so then then a motion to uh continue the public hearing to October
Continue.
eighty. It's it's gonna be time-specific. So that the motion, that motion would be like October would be to to continue the public hearing at your October seventh regular meeting.
Cuz we're not voting on that site right now, then if if we voted right now to do the special exception,
Yeah.
then every time it came up, we would have a public hearing and so I I don't know if you still feel like you
Correct.
I'm not trying to pressure you out of that idea, but
No.
I don't know if you still feel like you need an additional public hearing on making that decision or if you feel comfortable because because it would it would end this particular discussion, so it, you know.
Right.
No, it doesn't, the public hearing continues.
It if if she wants to do that, right. I I see her hemming and hawing, so I was just. I I see her hemming and hawing, so I was just.
I am very hemming and very hawing.
Um I can see her that she's torn on it.
The wheels are are.
Yeah, no, it'll take a minute, I just I wasn't trying to pressure you. Um.
Keep on papers.
Make a motion to
I wanna.
continue the public hearing, Dr. Ray.
I guess the question is, do you wanna continue the public hearing about making the text amendment or do you wanna continue the public hearing about this particular site? Which is the one we wanna talk more about?
I say both.
We need one motion here. I think, you know.
Well, Shannon, do you feel like you're gonna hear more information that makes you want to pass the text amendment?
Um, I really yeah. I I I I yeah, I do, I do.
Oh, you might want to, okay, okay.
Okay. I'm just really uncomfortable with
Yeah, yeah.
the way it stands right now.
Okay.
Wait, so it's.
Yeah, we could close the public hearing this evening and then vote on a modified text amendment. Is that correct?
You you could also do that.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what I thought we were leaning toward, well, I mean, some of us, no, I'm that's what I thought, right? Isn't that what I thought?
I.
Right, right, yeah.
Like, so we were going to close the public hearing and vote on that special exception concept.
We close the public hearing and then. Right, right.
Which it seems like there's
Yeah.
I I think reasonable su- support for that, um or
Right, yeah, that's good, yeah.
or we keep it open and then we come back to these two choices again after hearing from more people.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I would be in favor of closing and then making the change to a special exception.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm I'm in favor, sorry.
As well.
Well, there's there's an underlying principle here though, and that is that we announce the public hearing for specific cause. If we take action on something that is not announced, then we have some exposure.
No, I don't think that's true at all, Mr. Chairman. You 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 receive public, you you literally receive public hearing,
Well.
a public comment that said, wanna review it, we wanna be more specific, you can certainly make that change.
Yeah.
You can most certainly do that. That's the point of the public hearing process. You do not have to re-advertise a spec- the fact that you've changed it to a special exception review, you do not.
Well.
Yeah, I'm just saying. I mean, we don't have to be unanimous.
Well, that's true, we're gonna vote, it's sooner or later, I mean, it is already eighteen fifteen, but.
Okay.
Right. Absolutely.
So is there a motion to close the public hearing or does it need a public hearing? Which motion? Well.
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
That's me.
So we have a motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
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 And those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Then we're unanimous, it's.
It's not, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right, no, there was.
Not even.
Five to one.
It's five to one, yeah. So the public hearing is closed and is there enough of a strong enough feeling on this exactly the reaction to take or should we put this away till the next meeting?
I think I would be in favor of making the change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
To a special exception, not a site plan.
The special.
So.
Yep.
Do you have wording in mind, Jack?
I do not.
Okay.
I would defer to George.
We'll leave that to uh our our legal experts.
Okay, actually.
Wow.
So we need to modify the text that we have in front of us sufficient to What's the outcome, I'm looking.
So you have a motion.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Does it need any other two minutes?
So I no, I think you just simply add a sentence at the end that says the commission um designate the use in the district as a special exception. That's all you need to do.
Any comments?
Uh hold on one second. Yeah. So we would leave the text amendment that would say pursuant to section five, which is all industrial districts and section seventeen to permit actually agricultural agricultural events and organic recycling facility as permitted main uses.
Okay, so here there you go, so how about as permitted special exception uses or uses permitted by special exception, good catch.
Yes, that. Thank you.
And does this include that change to the definition that's like a separate thing where we're just trying to make this more clear?
So you you I if you want to change the definition, I would suggest that change as well, of course.
I think we just need to say some or is that technically it doesn't specify that all, but I find that confusing, that sentence.
Which sentence do you?
The last sentence, said facility must be continuous to an ongoing farm or agricultural operations and must supply organic recycled material to said farm. I just find it to be not clear that not all.
Oh, yes.
Like, it's not, you're not.
Yes.
I feel like that could be read as like you're just supporting your farm with this compost pile and I don't, so that doesn't support the business use.
Yeah.
So I don't think that I feel like I should say some.
Would it be as easy as adding the word some?
Some or partial, partially.
Yeah, partially, yeah.
Partially or partially, yeah.
Yeah. George doesn't like that.
Yeah, well, that grammatically doesn't work with the way the sentence is structured today.
It must apply a portion of the organic recycled material to said farm.
It must apply some portion.
Some portion of the organic recycled material to the farm.
Or the.
That presumes that the price it's in here is acceptable to both. And uh I don't know if we wanna get into the whole.
Or you could strike the sentence if you don't like it.
I I think it's nice that it supports the farm and I think that it should be connected.
When's the connection, right?
Yeah.
I think that prevents it from being a cool district.
It must apply a portion of the organic recycled material to said farm.
Yeah.
So insert a portion of the.
Organic recycled stuff.
Yeah. Still need a motion, that says all that, folks.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to attempt? A motion?
Sure.
I don't know where that's coming in, but for move, the zoning commission approves application Z C twenty-four dash nineteen for a text amendment to the Simsbury zoning regulations pursuant to section five industrial districts and section seventeen, the definitions, to permit agricultural and agricultural events and organics recycling facility as permitted by special exception. Right? To industrial I one, I two districts with an effective date of October one, two thousand twenty-four. Am I also adding that the zoning commission designates these in the district by special exception?
No, I mean, I think you said it.
You did say it, but you did say it.
I I know, that's why I didn't know.
They need to have to add with the definition.
Okay.
And the revision of the definition to say.
Secondly.
Follow the revision of the definition.
A portion of. And my motion will include the amended definition. Is that enough?
A portion of the inserted.
Inserted a portion of the organic recycled material.
After. Okay, that that that's fine.
Also, I think it says twenty-four nineteen, but it's actually twenty-four.
I know, is it twenty-four nineteen or twenty-four twenty? There's two different numbers there. Okay.
Yeah, I think that was the.
Please change that. Could I please have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you.
You seconded?
Okay.
Okay.
Um.
So there's a motion and a second, who's the second?
Uh Kate.
Oh, the.
Kate.
Yeah, we both know.
Kate, let's move on. So is there additional discussion here, needed? We're ready to vote then? All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The application as amended is is adopted. I think if uh we're happy to have everyone stay, there's other items on the agenda. Had enough fun. We're gonna shift gears here to another application.
Uh Mr. Chairman, the the next item is a a sign plan, a freestanding sign application by our friends at specialty so- specialty.
Saw.
Specialty saw.
Saw.
Oh my. Specialty saw, thirty Walcott Road.
Look at the sign, look at this.
Um they have uh proposed a freestanding sign at the front of the property. I just have two good pictures that that help show it. Um the applicant is here. Your design review commission forwards forwarded you tonight a recommendation of approval. It is a, what do we say, a thirty
Twen- twenty seven.
Twenty seven square.
Twenty-seven square foot sign uh at their frontage. Uh it is a a kind of a lovely round mounted base sign as you can see from the picture you have there. And it's there recommends approval.
And the sign's not lit, there's just a light on the ground.
It's indirect indirect lighting uh shown as G there on the on the graphic.
Yeah.
I said that if you want, the applicant is here, you want.
Yeah.
So after all that, you guys will talk.
Hi, I'm Jeff Nagy, I'm a current owner and president of Specialty Saw, uh thirty Walcott Road.
Mm.
Have you answered any questions for you?
It's a lovely sign, yeah.
Thank you.
Um is the light, the light is directed directly at the signs, so there shouldn't be a lot of.
Correct. Yes, that's the intention.
I think we should be asking you some questions after the last one, but.
I know.
I'm happy to give you a layup.
Just as as an aside, I I noticed the application says that David B. Nagy is the owner.
He he is my father, he's still currently the property owner legally, yes. That's a work in progress.
Oh, okay. We went to kindergarten together.
I leave it. I get a lot of that, having to.
Very good. So good. Any other questions?
No questions.
Um are there any changes to be made or suggested in the application? Uh we need a motion to approve the application.
I'll make the motion. Move, the zoning commission approves application Z C number twenty-four dash twenty-two. An application of Bill Wise, applicant David Nagy, owner. Right permit to construct a an approximately twenty-seven square foot ex- externally illuminated freestanding sign for specialty saw inc. Located at thirty Walcott Road. Assesses map one oh three, one oh three block, four three nine, lot zero zero nine A. Simsbury, Connecticut, zero six, zero seven, zero zone R dash four.
Second.
Any other comments, questions? Time for a vote, all in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. The motion passes and handles themselves. We have another one.
Thank you very much.
We luck with your new sign.
Thank you.
I know, great.
So now we move on to another site plan and.
So I would um I would ask Mr. George to come up um on the site plan at sixty-eight Walcott and and discuss our options.
Chris, can you come over here, come over here in cases of.
Sure.
So um I'm Lou George and I'm here with Chris Lath and uh if you haven't heard he is uh leasing the town farm, um but in all in all seriousness, um so this application is to uh take the existing composting and and when I say composting, we're only talking wood recycling. No food, no other waste, nothing. Leaves and uh trees, all organic. And that's all you're giving it flammable right now. You're moving it to this site, uh which is sixty-eight Walcott, which is the ten acres and you have an overview of that. Um and uh even with the uh decision you made on the text amendment, I still believe that this is valid because we're we're it's already existing, it already exists on the farm. Now, it's agricultural, it fits in. Uh staff wanted us to come forward because um there is a structure. Uh there are some uh uh piles and uh there was staff comments on various items uh for that, so we're bringing this site plan to you for that purpose. The uh picture on the left is the area that is going to be used for the um pickup of material. So there will be a eight by forty uh office container, uh that'll be the office, it'll only have electricity. Uh it's on the ground, um which is on the left right there, thank you. Uh and then there'll be bins like the one on the right, there will be eight bins. Uh and it's and I think that is right next door to you, is that the one or is it a similar?
Uh that's similar, there's.
There's one picture where you could see, uh do you have the other one?
Go back one bit, but it's hard to pick out.
So there'll be eight bins, uh thirty-six inches w- uh wide, um and on those, so those will be concrete, um and uh it'll be removable if needed. It'll be along that bottom side on the left, uh and there'll be hoop houses uh which are just like those uh greenhouses to cover, which we just saw in that other picture. Uh one hoop house for two bins, so there'll be four of them. They go uh no more than fifteen, twelve to fifteen feet up in the air, uh and they will be along that left side. So people come in, uh where there's a fifteen-foot paved apron, that was one of the comments in talking to staff. Uh will come in, uh there will uh there is already an existing gravel driveway, it's been overgrown, uh Chris will restore it, that goes all the way down the side and that is gonna be the um lane used by uh vehicles coming in to drop off or pick up. And um the retail use, you know, people will come in and turn, as they come in to the right, uh stop either in the gravel in that parking area that's designated or if they have a trailer to the left, um talk to the person in the office, the person will come out and load them and it'll be a um one circle type activity and back out uh the entrance. There were a couple of comments a- around this area with regard to staff in terms of a little detention swell that uh we would put in. Uh the paved apron uh that we talked about, uh it'll all be gravel, if there needs to be a tracking pad, um that'll be added in, um i- if needed. Uh but with the gravel and with the apron, they think that should solve the problem. There'll be silt fencing uh during the construction because there is a pump house just to the west of of that area. Um so we had a concern there. Um moving back, uh there were a couple of items that um so first I'll talk about the colored photographs that you have there, show the uh basic operation. So the only structures are the ones that that I just talked about and showed you. The other items are merely uh the materials uh that will come in and they'll start with um bringing in the brush and that'll go on the green area. Um and they've broken up all about an acre. Uh so he's got an acre set aside for each one of these. So the brush comes in, it gets chipped, um um and whatever the initial product uh is and then it'll it works its way up, so there's not a lot of traffic goes from the mulch to soil, um and then firewood uh processing will all be in each of those moving from uh the blue up to the yellow and then right near the pickup and drop off spot. Um there is a red section that is uh there'll be no activity down there, there will be equipment parking in that area and that is because that is in the present um flood uh area. Um there's a uh the staff also asked um uh for a protection from the stream. Uh so there will be a wood chip burn, which is in black and it's on the uh left side, uh all along there. Uh that will be put up to um stop uh any u- um. Uh, that will be put up to um stop uh any um anything eroding down towards uh the water with some plan to uh regularly remove the sediment and uh keep it at its normal um height. There's a sewer line that has been identified by staff. Uh, most of it runs from Walcott outside. There's a fence where the trees are and there'll be no activity outside that fence. Most of it runs along there, but it does cut across um about where the brush and debris, towards the end of the brush and debris and the the wood chip area. A lot of it goes across the part that won't have any work done on it, but there are some uh manhole covers and sewer that have to be identified and those are going to be protected. And ten feet uh either way will have four feet of um cover on it. Uh, and then there's one that runs across west to east, um, out by the um wood chip berm on the orange. And that um again has to be uh protected with um four feet of cover and ten feet on either side. And there's a manhole. Those were the main um issues with the site itself. Uh, let me see if there's anything else that was staff related. There is um, so with regard to the flood plain, most of the the project and the operations will not be in that flood plain. However, um, that back area, if it has equipment or there's any hundred year flood in the uh forecast, uh those items will be moved um to the areas that are outside that area. And if, you know, if something like that occurs, there's enough notice. We talked about that with staff. That was one of their concerns. So those are the, that's kind of the operation. Uh, what this is is uh taking wood, chipping it, recycling it and using it for mulch. Um, soil composting, um, and it's going to be used, as we talked about, for uh the farming operations there to restore those uh fields that have yet to be um viewed. These in eighteen years have been neglected, some of which have uh have any soil on it or and no nutrients or organic material in it. In fact, that area right there, um, that we're talking about, although it is and has been uh armland. Um, if you looked at that soil, it was very, um, it was gone.
Depleted, depleted.
You'd say it. Depleted. Uh, um, uh, so that's all uh what's going to occur with some of that. And then they will be selling it and that's the operation to sell it. It's occurring, what he does right now is occurring uh right at Flaming Farm. It's a residential area. Um, there are no complaints, uh, so, um, if you look at this, you have a landfill to the right. And you have a very similar but more intrusive operation to the left, which is um compass. So they do rock crushing, um, and they have some organic materials. So it certainly fits within the neighborhood. Um, and I I think it's it's even a better uh place for it than where it is now. It takes it out of that area of uh residential area and brings it down to a place that would be more conducive. But um, just to alleviate the concerns, uh, he's on West Fountain Road in a residential area. And you really haven't heard boo. And how many years have you been there?
I've been there nine. It was probably there fifteen to twenty before me. Um.
So in the nine years that he's been there, you you pretty much you you know what you're going to get with him. And and this is a much better uh operation, more organized. They don't have to keep moving things around. It all fits within the the farm lease. Uh, this is everything we've gone over with the town staff, both Department of Public Works and uh planning. Uh, so um, I think that this um fits and it's something that should be approved. So I I will say from a timing perspective, it we we started this process fourteen months ago. As time takes on, uh, he wasn't able to get this season in. He the lease started in July, uh, so from a timing standpoint, um, he wants to take his operation down there and start moving along and be able to, you know, put some things into the fields now. He's already started, I will say. Um, I guess uh, I don't know if it was to this one or the other one that he's already provided to um um donations, um, on and a very tight timeframe uh to the food bank. Um, and a lot more of that uh will come. I think it's a a nice operation. Um, well, but timing is kind of important and he's already lost a few months here, so.
So will you be actually growing things?
That's all we do there now. We've been growing since July. We started pre- preparing the fields back in June. Um, so we've been doing.
So your donations to the food bank is food.
Yeah, food.
Food products.
Yeah, yeah, we had our first two harvests the last couple of weeks, which is saying something for when you you usually don't plant July fifteenth.
Okay, great.
So to get anything out is good. Um, we're about to start activating one of the hoop houses this week to start our winter planting. So we should have stuff for the food pantry all winter long, which would be really nice for them. Um, they haven't really had a significant donation from the farm since about twenty nineteen. Um, as well as, you know, if you went to the blown out version, the the thirty acres that we've restored on the backside up against the river, that's going into agricultural production in the future. It needs years of restoration, but we've started the process.
And are you also selling pro- produce as well as making donations or is it primarily being used for donations at this time?
Um. Donations.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to figure out, we have to satisfy the the food pantry's need.
Mm-hmm.
So we're working with social services to try to figure out when we're going to start overloading them. Um, but yeah, for right until we satisfy, that's what it's for.
Okay. And how does this portion, so I mean, it's clear what the rotation of cars are, but I'm not actually familiar with what you're doing now at Flaming um completely. So people can come and and pay to deposit their yard waste or whatever to you and then you will clean it up and put it through this process and then you're able to resell.
Yeah. Basically, what I always say, everything that comes to us is is vastly residential waste. Somebody comes, takes a tree down, or you take a tree down in your house, comes to me. Um, you're welcome to bring it to me. We charge a small fee. We then process it. If it's the best piece of wood we can get, we can make it into firewood. If it doesn't meet firewood, it's mulch. If it's not mulch, we can make it into our compost product. And if it's not that, it sits there a little bit longer and we can mix it into our soil and make a really nice organic soil product. And the same people that drop off the brush can pick up the soil on the other side. So, you know, we have it set up so that if you're in a pickup truck, you can come in, talk to my guy in the office. He tells you where to go. You dump it off. Ideally, in my case, you buy some product on the way out too, um, and you're on your way. It's like a five to ten minute process.
And and I just want to clarify, cause some people get a little nervous. When we're we're saying the waste, uh, this is only the wood recycling aspect. It's not other waste food banks. That's not part of what's going on there now.
Yeah.
Yes.
And and that's not what this is.
Keep people's leaves from their yard or.
Yeah, everybody thinks it's great. You know, they get, oh, well, have the guy leave wood chips at my house. And then they go,
Chasing.
Ooh, that tree ended up being a lot of wood chips. Well, this is where they go. Um, I I would say most of it in town goes to Flaming now, you know.
Tell me something else about that drawing that with the colored blocks on the right. You you referenced a a berm of some material that's containing a, I guess, water. Um, I'm not sure. There's a black line on the left, there's a black line on the right. Which one are you talking about?
It's here.
Yeah.
It's here.
Yeah, so so Walcott is here. And so this is going, uh, I guess, west, east.
It's the berm.
That's the berm.
That's the berm.
I see why.
It's the materials from getting into the road.
Yeah, the the yellow is.
And above it.
Yellow's the road.
Right.
Oh my god.
Gravel dr- gravel road, yeah. I you um, you did have um, someone had a question about uh or the overview of what was happening on the back area. Uh, we I we did have a drone take a picture. And I don't know if you want to see it, cause it does show those fields that have been restored that weren't like they are now when he first went there.
And they're not really part of the application, are they?
Uh, no, just be it up. They're not. They're just the farmlands that have been restored, trying to just show what he's done already on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I I would just want to make sure that uh my colleagues understand that uh one of the things that is specifically being approved or asked to approve is that office structure, so steel, aluminum, whatever it's made of, that structure. And um, that specifically is identified in the motion to approve, so.
And.
Could you put back to the, it's up there, isn't it?
Yeah, you you could put up that picture and that was um approved by design review uh today.
So it's twenty by forty feet.
Eight by forty.
Eight by forty.
Oh, excuse me, eight by forty.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Mister George a question? Cause I think it'll be important to.
Sure. I would also point out that, see where it says two hothouses?
Should be hoop.
Hoop, not a hothouse.
It's two O's. Okay. We're on the same page here.
Can I, can let me just ask a question, cause I think it's important for the record so 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 that we have an understanding. I mean, I think it, I think it would be important to to explain to the commission why, why this is approvable after we just went through the rigmarole of the I I I I suspect it's because you're going to say the organic recycling is not a part of this application now.
No.
So I I think you've got to explain how this is permissible by site plan uh with without.
Without special exception.
Without the special exception process.
Right, it's a, it's an agricultural use that's occurring down there already. Uh, it's wood recycling. It's not under that uh organic recycling definition. And and and, you know, that's something that was discussed uh when we were get that definition for the future uh potential. Uh, but this application is just the wood recycling that is um already occurring on that land. Um, and is what he, the exact, if my narrative uh that was submitted with the application uh right at the beginning, it says um to, this is an application to move his present operation to that location. Um, so the present operation, uh, that's exactly what it involves. So um, I don't think.
And it's permitted in that I district at that location because.
It's grandfathered in.
It's existing because it exists in operations.
Right. Right.
Mostly.
That's helpful.
Yeah, I'm, we staff have mostly. There's a lot going on tonight.
So do any of the other commissioners have questions, comments?
Well, I do have a comment, I guess, for the applicant. Um, this is from Susan Messina who's not here. So she asked about the use of gravel
I don't think I can give.
For the driveway and because you said he was going to be, you you know, re-upping, fixing that driveway.
Restoring it.
Yeah, restoring it. She asked if it would be possible to use wood chips or an other biodegradable material?
Uh, um.
Towards the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah, bottom of page one.
So Mister George did not get this today.
Okay, that's okay.
Well, my fault.
Yeah, number one, it is, gravel's there and it's it's weeds and it's covered over. It's been gravel forever.
Yep.
Um, I uh, I think it should remain gravel. I think it will help uh with the equipment going down there, the trucks going down there. And then coming off, gravel does help with stopping the tracking along the way. Um, so I think, I think it should remain gravel. Uh, it's kind of interesting if you look to the east and making gravel. So I I understand her concern, but it was there.
Well, her point is, she's saying it's not in the best long-term interest of this land, which was donated to and is owned by the public. That's her comment. That's all. I just felt because she's not here.
But it's there now. It's it's there now.
Understood. Just passing up.
And 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 I think specifically thinking it might impact any future opportunities to do farming if there's gravel. That's, but I don't know if that's necessarily the use that we're going to anticipate seeing in that particular area. Um.
You 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 could, but that's not a problem because whatever farming has been done there for the last thirty years or so, it's that it's that's the access road. You need, you need roadway. You need some uh structure to get by. You don't want mud. Um, so you don't want pavement. It is really probably the best uh option or. I think um, I understand your concern, but I I I don't think um it's it's a necessary change just given what's there now. We're storing it with the same material. Exactly, um, it's all over that area, uh, on both sides of this property.
Just felt like she wasn't here to voice it. That's all.
No, I and I didn't, I didn't have it before, so.
Yeah. It's okay. Thanks, Mister Chairman.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? I think we're all set.
Okay.
Um. Does somebody want to make a motion?
Well, is there a public comment?
No, this is.
Uh, that's fine.
Oh, thank you, okay.
So, does somebody want to make a motion? There's a draft motion in your hands.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thanks, Diane.
All right, let's see here. So, make sure I got this right. Uh, I move that the Town of Simsbury Zoning Commission approves application ZC number two four dash two three. An application of Louis N. George Esquire, applicant Town of Simsbury owner for a site plan application to install approximately eight by forty, eight foot by forty foot temporary office building with associated gravel parking improvements, a gravel access road and product sales and yard waste bins in association with the agriculture and composting operation at sixty eight Walcott Road. Assessors map I three, block four three nine, lot zero zero eight, Simsbury, Connecticut, oh six, oh seven, oh zone I dash one. Uh, the commission finds, I need to write, do the rest of this. Commission finds that the application for a site plan is met the standards set in the site plan criteria in section eleven and is subject to the following conditions. The plan will be developed in substantial conformance with submitted site plan application material dated by town staff on September sixth, twenty twenty four. Effective date for the site plan is October one, twenty twenty four to allow for the statutorily required appeal part period of the text amendment and site plan application. Unnecessary state of Connecticut DEEP permits for the proposed operation shall be obtained prior to the operation commencing. All erosion control and soil stabilization measures shall shall comply with the approved plans and the guidelines as established in the Connecticut Guidelines for Soil Erosion and Sediment Control twenty twenty four. Period. Sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, Mister Chair, uh.
Sure.
The condition number two probably does not apply anymore since it was tied to the, to the uh, the 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 text amendment necessarily.
Oh. Okay, sorry. Yes. So it will strikes number two.
So striking number two is part of the record.
Yes.
So, any other comments, questions?
Second the motion.
And there are no more questions or comments. If we're all in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
I suppose, man. Motion is adopted unanimously. So, good luck.
Thank you. Mister Chairman, our deputy town engineer is here tonight, um, with a site plan amendment. Thank Adam for uh for bearing with us.
She was first.
But this is a, this is a good way to e- end, uh, at least maybe with. Landscaping revisions to town hall, particularly related to the uh kind of the outside department line entrance. Adam, go.
Good evening. For record, Adam Kessler, Deputy Town Engineer. Um, we're here for a site plan amendment to reinvigorate our main entrance on the north side of the building here. Um, this is what it looks like today. Might have seen it when you walked in. Um, the original site plan did not envision changing this area. Um, and I think it was twofold. One, um, it does provide screening, um, to mechanicals and uh some of the windows. Um, and two, probably cost reasons. Um, as you know, we made some changes to uh make the plan a little bit more cost effective. And I hope everyone likes the changes, uh, and how it looks now, especially now that we get to enjoy the site lighting. Um, and so during some of the sidewalk work, we had to prune back the rhododendron. Um, that's in the far side of this picture. And, you know, during that process, we talked to landscaper about the health of those rhododendrons. Um, generally, the recommendation was, yeah, you could prune them back heavily and let them slowly kind of come back in. Uh, take three to five years. Um, and they do really like that spot. However, they've been there for a long time and they're um pretty much at the limit. Um, so we figured we'd take this time to to throw out a design that was prepared by Castle Boos, um, who. um who, you know, basically was instructed to give us something that was um not so monolithic in nature. Um kind of gives us a little bit better look at our historic building here, provides screening for mechanicals um and is low maintenance for our staff. Um we think what they gave to us hit all those points uh pretty well. Um it is fairly dense in terms of spacing and um and all the species together and that's by design for screening and mechanicals. 'Cause we've got quite a few along the building that you would know because it's all covered by a giant rhododendron. Um so this landscape plan takes care of the the north side of the building and will bring it around the corner uh just a little bit, you can see on the the planting plan itself.
Just got to see the site plan there. It's kind of here and then around.
Yeah, just up to that brick uh walkway uh for the s- you know, front entrance, I guess we'll call it. Um and that's mostly because the low lying evergreens there are a little outdated as well. So we feel like what we're presenting is a really nice plan. It gives us native plantings, pollinators, a little variety. Um you know, dogwood trees, there's about five of them, give us a little interest. Um you know, berries for the birds, flowers for the bees. Um and we're hoping everyone likes it.
Great. Looks nice.
If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them from.
Gonna do this this fall?
So yeah, I might have been a little late on uh on this proposal uh to be quite honest. We're gonna we're reaching out to um nurseries right now to see what type of plant stock they have. There's some uh plants that are available now and there's some that that might not be. So our hope, if everything, you know, falls in place, we do uh do the planting this fall. Um we're likely gonna do it uh with in-house staff, uh our grounds people and DBW staff. Um you'll see some of them planting trees, hopefully this fall as well in other parts of the site. Um so if if we can get the stock, uh we'll certainly do it this fall. And if not, it will be spring planting. Um that's our hope and that will be the end of our project here.
Um I have a couple questions. So um the flowering dogwood with berries, is that kind of like shed down onto the path and everyone like be tracking like berries? And is it gonna be like a maintenance issue?
Uh our hope is not. Um I don't believe it is. It was um you know, it's one of the things we're also kind of concerned about with the mechanicals.
Mm.
Is a possibility for that to to drop on any of those. Um and you know, the the worry is not, you know, we asked the landscaper,
Okay.
the landscape architect that.
Yeah, all right, good. So that was already considered.
They were concerned.
And are those mechanicals low? Sorry, like you really can't tell. And then in that rendering, it almost looks like there's something large behind the tree, but it doesn't look like that tree would block. Like I don't know what that is back there. That.
It is. Yeah, that's our giant steel cabinet that um
Okay.
that is very large. Um and the purpose of it is we have an air intake um against the building in that area. So an air intake for HVAC.
Invent? Oh.
So that basically grabs air from higher up, not ground level and brings it in. The purpose of that was um, you know, originally we had a pull-off area there and that's where um often trucks would pull off and uh idle. So we grabbed the clean air from higher up. Uh what we were, our plan is for this is to take a look at how everything looks um as we're planting and if we need to and can lower it, we will. Um so it is pretty tall right now. Um but we are gonna lower it and hopefully continue to screen it. Um.
Okay, 'cause I don't think that tree is gonna screen and that tree is also deciduous and so like in the winter you're gonna see it.
Yeah.
Um and like also just from this angle, it's blocking it. But if you look at the plan, it's actually like not like when you're approaching, I think you're gonna see it, like everyone that walking into the town hall will see that giant cabinet 'cause that tree is not at all blocking it. If it's that white box next to that tree.
Right.
So I I don't know if you wanna like think about painting it. I don't know if it's possible to like 'cause if it's if it's like a like a steel color, might look better if it was like a dark brown, like the sandstone or black or green or something else. Just a thought. I don't know.
Right, right, yeah. I know.
When you're lowering it or when you're adjusting it, maybe it's a good time to look at a different material or maybe just screen it with something else, like a trellis or a some sort of
Yeah, like grasses, grasses or?
What's that?
Grasses?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's like tall, like a story tall.
Wow, I know.
I know.
It does pretty tall.
I think if you have to lower it. Yeah, but like maybe just even a some sort of something that's a little nicer than steel.
It is, so.
So either like treat the steel or put something around it. Some sort of like lubored wood or some, I don't know, something that's not too high maintenance and not too expensive.
Yeah, we'll serve that later if you need.
But I definitely think it's gonna be visible. This is like really conveniently still showing in the rendering.
Yeah, they they have that.
At least they showed it in the yard, didn't they?
I know. I agree, I agree. But like this is like the ideal angle, which is nice 'cause that's like hop met, you know, like that's kind of the view you'd have from the sidewalk. So that's not like, you know, we're similar, but that's not bad. But like when you're coming in, it's just gonna, you're gonna just see it. Uh and then also the last thing is, and then all the other people talk, sorry. Um the in that planting list, is that Castle Spire Blue Holly the only evergreen? Or or some of these other, like I don't know if uh Hoda dendron is uh an evergreen also?
It's rhododendron with the R on it.
Oh wow.
I was wondering what rhododendron was too. It's just rhododendron without the R.
Kesh.
Oh. I was like, I don't know what that is.
I'm tired.
I always thought it was like a variation on a, I'm not a plant expert, so I thought it was like a variation on the.
Not in the hop house.
I know.
It's a hop house.
Um okay, so rhod- the rhododendron, so that is evergreen. So that's that's good.
Right.
'Cause it's nice to have a mixture there so that it still looks nice on the terrain. Okay. Okay.
Sorry. Tired, makes me laugh.
Other questions or comments?
Oh, it's a nice plan. Yeah, I think it looks lovely.
I think I I can't let it go without saying, I I'm very impressed with the work the town staff pitched in on this because I saw so many of the Toby Utilities guys out there on hot days, working on paving and whatever.
Yeah, works great.
Yeah, it really, the result is excellent. Yeah, it's a really nice job.
It's a long.
Very nice job.
Yeah, great thing. I I hope it lasts a hundred years.
We do too.
Yeah.
Someone do it again.
I think that would be somebody else's job next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, thanks.
So. So we don't need anything more than a motion to approve. There's no changes.
Okay, motion.
I have something.
Okay, Jackie, here you go.
Um.
Oh, I have something to add before you even read it.
I know. Can I just make a motion to approve uh ZZ twenty four twenty four?
I'm sure.
And I got a second already.
I seconded. I seconded it.
You have to read the motion.
I have to read the whole thing?
Oh, thank you.
Wow.
I was like twice.
I will make a motion to approve uh ZZ C twenty four twenty four, an application of the Town of Simsbury Adam Kessler agent for site plan amendment to revise the landscaping plan for the Simsbury Town Hall property located at nine thirty three Hottard Street, subject to the site plan dated September sixth, two thousand twenty four, prepared by Castle Booze Associates Incorporated.
Second? Or is there was already a second?
I seconded. She and I seconded.
She and I seconded.
Uh any other questions or quok- comments on the motion? All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed nay. Motion is adopted. Anyhow, so. Thank you.
Very nice panel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting.
Mr. Chairman, um regarding uh general commission business, item number uh ZZ twenty four oh six, I would I would recommend perhaps we identify maybe a special meeting
Yes.
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 to just talk about those hazard strategies as opposed to having them on at the end of a, you know, what seems like a a an increasingly heavy regular meeting schedule.
Yes.
We're just not gonna get, we're just not gonna get to the and we're not gonna
I think we're personally.
we're not gonna do it good due diligence by.
You wanna pull out the calendar and suggest some dates?
I think we should do it now.
Yeah, okay.
If you wanna do that from your office.
I would like I would like not to do that right now. I'd like to take it from my office. Because I'm, you know, we're gonna, as you know, we're on about our thirteenth hour today and it's been a long one this day. So I will, we will uh provide you some dates. How about that?
It sounds good.
Sounds lovely. Thank you.
And and I have nothing else to report tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that being the case, uh does anybody else have anything to say? Okay, uh we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Ten seconds.
Second.
All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
And those opposed nay. The motion passes the meetings adjourned at nine o'clock.
Oh, no.